Started with our information items. There's no reason to that we have to wait because someone other people are late. So.
Can you public comment?
Yeah, so if you're ready, okay. Good afternoon, evening, everybody. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of 2014 of the City School Committee. And, uh, right on time, we can take a roll call. Cindy, would you do the honors?
Sure. Councilmember Adkin.
Here.
School Board Member Affelt.
Here.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkman. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West. School Board Member Simon. School Board Member Kent. School Board Member Dice.
Here.
School Board Member Dwin.
Present.
And Student Member Carr.
Here.
And Student Member Seth.
Thank you. And please make a note if any other committee members wander in, please note their arrival time just separately. So. Right after roll call here. So this takes us to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right. Going once, going twice? We actually can approve the minutes.
Move approval.
Any corrections, changes? All right, if not, I don't see anything, then they shall be approved by acclamation. And now, this takes us to staff and committee member comments. Staff first.
I just have one comment. We're starting our indoor movie series this Friday, so come to the Senior Center. We're showing Ice Age. It's free, and it's starting at seven o'clock, and there will be hot chocolate and popcorn served for $0.50, so it'll be a nice family event. And then the next one will be the Friday, January 24th, and that's Happy Feet, and so I think this will be fun.
Yeah. Any other staff member comments? Okay. Committee member comments?
Yeah, where is the head of the staff of the city of the school district?
So, I'll let you. You did it. You did it.
So, there've been discussions about the transition, and we're in discussions with our superintendent about different ways to change the transition process. While we're in those discussions, we have brought in John Quinn. John Quinn is past, has acted as superintendent and played the superintendent role in the past, and the nice thing is he's played in continuity for every single superintendent that we've had over the last 10 years. And so he's advising the board and acting as board and staff liaison, working with Ms. Allen and working with Mark. And we hope to have a completed our conversations with superintendent in the next, any day.
Any day.
So it's just a few days to see if there's a smoother way to do the transition.
Well, actually, what I'm looking for, Joshua, is a representative of EUSD staff at this table for the City School Committee. Who would that be?
That's Mark Bonet, and I didn't, I missed it.
Can he sit up here at the table? So you have a representative?
So Mark, and pursuant to our bylaws, Mark is the person who.
We like to be fully represented here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's my only comment.
All right. Well, in the future, will Mr. Quinn be sitting up here, or how's that gonna work?
That decision is under discussion, and we'll have an answer for you shortly. We actually have a meeting right after this.
All right. Well, welcome. Thank you for stepping up to the mantle here.
Why?
All right. Any other committee member comments? This takes us to our information items, and committee members Seth and Coward, do you have a report for us?
Yes.
You must have worked this out ahead of time about what you were gonna say.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the ESS Associated Student Body is planning a winter formal, which the tickets will be going on sale Monday, January 13th, and they will be for $10 and $15 at the door, which it will be held at the Senior Center from 7:00 to 10:00, and chaperones are needed. So if you are interested, please contact Ms. Brenda.
What's the date again?
It is January 25th. And our annual crab feed will be held on February 15th at the Senior Center from 6:00 to 8:00, so please purchase tickets to support the ESS sport teams and various clubs. The tickets are $50, and we will be passing out the flyers very soon. And Aditi and I will also be selling tickets, so if you would like to purchase them, we will be selling them at the next meeting.
Okay. You're right.
The Black History Month is quickly approaching, and ESS will have an African-American trivia daily during morning announcements. And lastly, our basketball teams have just begun their season, and they're doing great so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good report. This takes us to the Emory Ed Fund.
Ruth?
Oh, just can I add just one small point that I heard last night, or actually, John, I heard it from you, so perhaps you could, about our track team and our coach?
Oh, well, I think we had the announcement the last time that our football coach was named Coach of the Year.
Oh.
By the Oakland Raiders, apparently, based on the, based, based. The comment was better than their coach, from the, from the public members.
Watch out, we'll be recruited.
And our track team. And our track team, well, that was as of, based on our May performance in the state finals, our, I think it was the, was it the quarter mile or one of, one of the events?
Four by 100 relay team.
Four by 100 was ranked the 33rd fastest time in America last year.
Nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Are we ready for Phillip now? Any other comments? Come on up, Phillip. Happy New Year.
I would like to honor and recognize one of Emory Secondary's own, Gerardo Wevis, who I have worked with personally, as he's also a volunteer with the Emory Ed Fund during his summers. Gerardo is a senior at UCLA. The Emory Ed Fund recently received Gerardo's grades, and he received a 4.0 GPA last semester. He's a sociology major. He's a four-year scholarship recipient at the Ed Fund at $5,000 a year also. Congratulations to Gerardo, and if you'd like to make a donation to the Emory Ed Fund, simply make your checks payable to the Emory Ed Fund and write in the memo line Scholarship Program. You can mail checks to 1275 61st Street. Special thanks to former Emeryville Center for Community Life Architect Roy Miller, who has designated donations to be made to the Roy Miller Scholarship through the Emory Ed Fund in lieu of gifts for his retirement. These funds will be used to support the Emory Ed Fund Scholarship Program. To date, we have received donations from David Geller of $100, The Architect Club via Roy Miller for $250, $500 pledge from Dr. Lindo, $500 from Roy Miller, $1,000 from DSK Architects, and $1,000 from MK Think. That's a grand total of $3,350 that has been raised. Thanks to everyone that donated. We are still accepting donations on behalf of his retirement. If you'd like to make a donation, simply make checks payable to the Emory Ed Fund, and in the memo line, write Roy Miller Scholarship. You also can donate securely via PayPal at emoryed.org/donate. The Emory Ed Fund is being featured as a nonprofit of the month in January by Farley's Cafe in Emeryville. You can go by Farley's located at 1195 65th Street. Every Tuesday in January, the Ed Fund will receive a percentage of all sales. You just stop by, make a purchase, and it's that simple. Thank you to our partners at Farley's and to Daniel Embry, the manager of that location. Special thanks to Chevron employee Amalia Escalante, who is a volunteer with the Emory Ed Fund. Through Chevron, employees are able to volunteer up to 40 hours of their time annually, and they, Chevron will match their time at $1,000. Thank you to Amalia for her time and to Chevron for their financial support. If someone would like to volunteer within the school, simply visit emoryed.org/volunteer for more information on the various programs, or to complete a volunteer application, or you can contact us directly at 510-601-4997. Special thanks to MAC5, who are annual donors to the Emory Ed Fund for their recent donation of $1,000. I would like to recognize a few of the Emory Ed Fund's board members who recently donated. All of the Emory Ed Fund board members not only give their time and talent, but they are also donors. City Council Member Nora Davis, Emeryville City Manager Sabrina Landreth, Albany Interim City Manager Patrick O'Keefe, and the Ed Fund Board President John Gooding. Thank you all for a collective donation of $1,900. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the new scholarship funded in Roy's name in particular. Update on the ECCL demolition and construction schedule? Is that your item?
Yes, that's me.
All right.
I am Dave Gallagher. I'm the interim project manager for the ECCL project, and I'm sure that most of you, or probably all of you, have driven by and seen in Ms. Dice's case, her high school, that alma mater being torn down, and she had a more emotional reaction than she expected to have. And maybe some of the others of you have emotions too as you go by and see those buildings go down. But I wanted to put that part of the schedule in context with the follow-up steps and the overall things that need to happen for the success of the project. It's a great project. The more I learn about it, the more I'm involved in it, the more I love the project, and I see that it's been very well planned, and there's so many good things that have been put into place for that project, and I'm happy to get to help execute it. And hopefully you can see that our heads are not in the way, but the map here just shows a green area. The demolition has, is almost complete. It'll be complete by the end of next week, and it's been going for 15 working days, and I'm very impressed as how much work the Turner and their subcontractors have been able to do in those 15 days. The green area shown there were the five small buildings along San Pablo Road. They came down beginning December 18th, and they essentially worked through the holidays and got all those down. And then the yellow area there is the main classroom wing along 47th that is almost completely down, with the exception of a small piece on the corner of 47th and San Pablo. And then the gym and pool area will remain and be completely remodeled as part of the project. And the next step, now, all this demolition is, does not include the demolition of the foundations and the footings and the slabs of the buildings at this point, and that's because that demolition would disturb soil. And because this is a school, it's under the DTSC jurisdiction. That's the state agency that dictates how we disturb soil. And obviously, to dig trenches and grade and dig footings for new buildings, that's a disturbance of soil. So they, they are giving us guidance on how to handle the soil. They have a lot of experience with school sites in older areas that have long histories of uses like Emeryville, and what we found is they've been very helpful and very responsive to give us guidance on, on ultimately how to deal with those soils. But that process is a lengthy process. That covers this whole red area. Basically, none of the soil, none of the foundations can be disturbed until we have an approved remedial action plan, work plan, RAW, R-A-W, approved by the DTSC. And this is how that schedule fits. The top line there, shown here, is a, about a six-month process, and I'll just walk you through the things that have happened so far. There's a couple of public hearings that needed to take place. The first one took place in December, that the school board held that. That went well. I mentioned the remedial action work plan that's being developed in the month of January. That will go for a public review, a 30-day public review period in February. And then the three months following that, some of that time will be taken to respond to any comments that occur during February, finalize the plan, get the sign-off of DTSC as to exactly how these soils are gonna be handled. The project has about 5,000 yards of dirt that needs to be removed just to accommodate the new type of grading that the new facility needs. And so those 5,000 yards will have to be hauled off and dealt with and as directed by the DTSC. So once that plan is in place, that dirt, that earth can be moved, then the major construction can begin. So there may be after this demolition that concludes next week, a month or two or even more, where you don't see a lot of activity on the site, and the reason being is because we're in the process of getting that plan approved by the DTSC. Some of the other key features of the plan, of the schedule that need to fall into place, where we're trying to get to is here, the major construction of the facility. And this assumes that that begins in earnest, in full, about June 1st. And everything above here shows all the things that need to fall in place before that June 1st date. I mentioned the soils. There's also, schools have their building permits issued by the state, Division of State Architect, DSA. The plans and specifications are in front of DSA now. We're expecting final approval and building permits issued. This shows at the end of March, that could move into April, which time we would know all of the details and all of the scope that needs to be budgeted by our builder, Turner, and we can negotiate a guaranteed maximum price based on the approved finalized sets of drawings at the DSA. And then there is a joint occupancy agreement between the city and the school district that needs to conclude at some point, either when all these other things conclude or at some other time as the parties agree. And the board has asked that long-term there be a contracted firm to be, to function as what we're calling the owner's representative. When Roy was here, he was the owner's representative, the, for the district and the city in managing the project. I will be doing that for the interim from some undetermined time, and the board has asked that, that Mark Bonet and I help select a firm or recommend a firm where the city and the, and the district can agree on this firm to manage the project through the end of construction. And we're prepared to issue that request for proposal next week, and which would give us an opportunity to have responses in February, a selection in March, and if the board so chooses, they can, they can make an award or contract in April. And this is, this is the, these are the basic parameters, the basic milestones of the project, and at the bottom, there's a whole series of public meetings like this one that will occur. And as long as I'm here, I hope to be able to just give you a status report on our progress in all of these areas at each of the public meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. I'm sure I'm not the only committee member who would like to have a copy of that slide. Can you make sure it gets emailed to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll email it to the same distribution that's on, for City School.
And we get to see the?
This is just for fun, yes.
Yes.
This is a, like a highlight reel of the, of the highlights of the demolition process. I'm just gonna let that run a little while in the background.
That would be the demolition of the former boardroom.
Right. That's the, that's the former, we're looking at the former, well, this is PG&E disconnecting the pipeline to the school. This is this old theater building being demolished. The first, the first building that was demolished was the music room. This is part of the main classroom wing, and this, this is on, this is looking back on the classroom wing. This is what used to be, what was the art building on the corner of 47th and San Pablo. That's the long main classroom wing gone. This is looking, I think I'm standing in the art room looking back, looking north. And then here, this, this piece is the small piece that's left. That's, and this right here is the delineating point between the, what's being demoed and what remains. They're reinforcing that interface point so that the gym can remain and be completely remodeled. And this is, was earlier today, that last build, section of building on the corner of 47th and San Pablo coming down. And they have the big jaws that just grab things, and it's amazing how easy they throw away, throw these big, huge steel beams around like they're nothing. It's almost scary. So anyhow, and I'll be happy to send, send that slide with the schedule to each of you.
Thank you. Certainly is dramatic, and going down San Pablo, you could see the changes every, every day, so kudos to everybody for just getting to this very tangible point. Any other comments on this item? Members of the public want to say anything?
I have a question for the school board. That looks to me like a very, very tight schedule. Are you still anticipating opening in August of 2015?
Let me come on that. I'd like to comment on that. If you look at that schedule, in fact, I'll go back to that slide, it does not show the entire facility being able to open by July of 2015. Portions of the facility would be completed, but the completion of the 100% of the facility is shown out to March of 2016. Now, that's based on Turner's first past schedule, assuming a January, excuse me, a June 1st start of the main construction. If we're successful in somehow speeding up this process with the DTSC, which is not likely that it's possible, but we're trying, then we could buy some time on that. But I think the realistic picture is a portion of the facility would be ready in mid-2015 and the balance by March of 2016 is what the schedule currently shows.
And is it possible that the, the high school portion would be the one that would be ready in August of 2015, and then the Anna Yates could continue on at Anna Yates for the, for the following year? Is that possible?
Well, you know, I, if it's okay, I would rather comment on that later when some of these questions about the soils are answered, and then, and we've locked in our contract with our contractor with the guaranteed maximum price, because that ties our contractor to a specific schedule. And rather than give you too many preliminary shots at this, if you give us to a few months, we'll be able to announce a more definitive schedule, and we're working hard to get to that point.
Josh?
But I would say, Nora, that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
That's the perfect scenario.
I just have one more question, and this is, in the event that there is a lag or, you know, something crops up, which happens often, is, do you think there'll be any trouble with renewing the lease at Santa Fe for another year, for six months?
Do you want to comment on that?
We've talked to Oakland already with regard to an extension with that lease.
Very good.
For about six months.
So you got a Plan B.
Yes, we do.
Perfect, perfect.
I have a quick question. I can't really see the slide from over here, but one thing I would like to know about, whether it's up there or you report back to us later, is when the, we will have access to the gym and the pool?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
I think, just as a, since we're a public policy body, I think as a policy directive to staff, I think it does make sense, and I'd want to hear if there's any disagreement, that it sounds like the policy, and the policy that I would advocate, is that we, if at all possible, we add, we prioritize, number one, the high school, number two, the public facilities, and number three, the, the elementary school, you know, to the degree that it's possible.
Absolutely.
Joshua?
Without additional expense.
I want to, I want to just bring in the city perspective here, which is that the gym is our mass shelter in the event of a disaster, and we need to have that be available 24/7 throughout the construction, because you never know when we're gonna need to activate a mass shelter. And we have FEMA money going into this, and that's our location for a mass shelter.
That's actually problematic, very problematic, because the project completely remodels the inside of the gym. I mean, nothing is the same except for the structure. And to use that for any other purpose with that kind of activity would be hugely problematic.
So Sabrina, this is gonna fall to you to figure out what our alternatives are during this construction schedule, because you never know when we're gonna need to activate a mass shelter.
So can I make a comment? Lori Yelefond, who's our, works for the city of Emeryville, and myself have been working with the Red Cross to find that alternative site.
Oh.
So we've been, we've been working with them, and so we have another meeting with them soon. And we actually have been working with John Voss and Juliet Dunn here at the school, too.
So do you have some ideas that are worth sharing at this point in time about Plan B, C, and D?
I'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Thank you.
Because we have another meeting.
Thank you. If that's it on item 5C, that takes us to the full service, oh, sorry. Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Ken?
Ken's coming up. Anybody from the public or listening who, who wants access to this? It was also on the school board's agenda last night and should be available online through our agenda packet, so.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yeah, I've also been happy capturing the demolition, and I'd like to suggest that the fence that's out in front of the building, if you could move that back to the line of the trees, it would be a lot safer, because everybody's walking in the street. And then when you have a bicyclist and a person walking, there's a conflict there, so, and people will try to dance on the edge of the curb, because no one's going across the street. So if you just move that back to the tree line, then people will be able to use the sidewalk, and it'd be a lot safer. Thank you.
I don't think they want people using the sidewalk.
Sidewalk's closed.
Sidewalk's closed.
We just not saying.
The sidewalk is closed, but only needs to remain closed until the demolition is complete, so within the next couple of weeks, the sidewalk can be restored for the.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? All right.
Before you go on, just, it just came to me, but, and it's like a butterfly, it comes and goes. So, question was about the footage that I think Ken actually has too on a YouTube page, I believe. But, so my alumni association that I am a proud member of, very interested in having some images, because as I'm on Facebook, I have a number of people playing up pictures of demo pictures where they're having, you know, moments like I did last night. So just wondering how, that the video that you have, can that be shared, or I guess links to somewhere on our website or some, on a website?
Well, all the videos that I have, I can send links, and I don't know if you had a chance to open the one that I sent you.
Yeah, I had a moment last night.
Okay. I do have a system where it allows, it's not YouTube, but it's a, it's a Dropbox link. And, and so anyone who emails me, I'm happy to respond with a link to that email, and we can even post that on the website.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I have an appointment with Glenn Foster tomorrow to go over that.
Oh, good. Good, good, good. Thank you.
Dave, it may be a good idea to put it on the website.
Okay, we'll just do that.
Okay. I'm not sure who's leading off on this discussion about the community task force, but that's our last agenda item.
Can we remove it? I mean, can I just add? For me, I just think it would be great. We have a number of transitions happen. We have a number of transitions happening. If we could maybe put this one to February.
I would support that.
You want to continue this? This item will be continued then?
We are very supportive of that.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to speak to this agenda item even though we're not?
So...
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Nate Dorr from MK Think, and we are working with the task force to move it along. So, I was asked to come by Deborah and Roy back in December just to offer some suggestions that have been talked about for what we might want to do to continue, and that might prompt either a discussion tonight or for the future. So, what we had talked about was that in the cycle that we have left, so, recently, you saw a presentation on what's happened so far, but what's remaining to do essentially is first, reconvening of the task force to review where we are and to schedule and develop a public community input session. Second step would be to hold that community input session, collect a lot of input from the community. Third step would then be for the task force to reconvene and take all that input, synthesize it into something that can be brought to this group at a following session. And so, the rough timeline that we had looked at was roughly a once-a-month cycle like we had been doing before, with the idea that roughly around April, City Schools meeting would be a time when the task force could come forward and bring the community input to the group for your review and reflection.
We kind of put the brakes on it earlier because the timing didn't seem right. I'm not sure the timing's right yet. And that's just my thought about it. I think it should be delayed a little longer.
Well, I'll just throw, I think it's, now is not the best time to have that discussion. I think from, from my perspective on our end, we need to make sure our steps are in place and our people are in place to have that discussion.
Exactly.
I think that, I mean, that's just my...
Let's give it a little more room.
Yeah.
Wait till March.
I appreciate the consultants are eager to go with this, but we're not ready.
Whatever, whatever the time is right, this is because the two of them aren't here to talk about it. We just wanted to fulfill the agenda item.
We, we, in fact, in fact, let's revisit this once the school district has its top personnel in place. Then, we can put it back on the agenda. If you could track that, Cindy, that'd be good. Okay. So, that takes us to no action items. Before we adjourn, is there any last comments or... All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. See you next month.